Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I want to call to order the business meeting tonight for Monday, May the 14th of the Cabarrus County Board of Education. Okay, also, we're gonna, I'd like to inform you that on May the 7th, one of our teachers and a athletic director at C.C. Griffin Middle School, she passed away unexpectedly at her home on May the 7th. I'd like for you all to join me in a moment of silence in her memory. Okay, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Now, we're gonna move on to the opening ceremony, and I'd like to inform you, the following Air Force Junior ROTC cadets from Northwest Cabarrus High School will perform our opening ceremony tonight. It's Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Anthony Orifice, Cadet Major Jeremy Wiltshire, Cadet Major Scott Brophy, and Cadet Technical Sergeant Fahid Farouk. Alternate is Cadet Second Lieutenant Amanda Waters. And the cadets are being led tonight by Lieutenant Colonel Calvin Martin, United States Air Force Retired, and Senior Master Sergeant Connie Corinne Smith, U.S. Air Force Retired. Would you all join me as the presentation of colors?
All the guard. Left, pace. Freeze, set, colors.
My allegiance to the flag, of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Harry, colors. Post. Right, pace. Forward, march.
Okay, board members, you've had the agenda now for a few days. Do I have a motion that we accept the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Now, we'll move on to the recognition section of our meeting tonight, and I'd like to ask Ms. Ronnie Boone to the podium for the Impact Through Education Awards.
Good evening. This evening, we're going to be recognizing students and staff at Patriots Elementary School and Northwest Cabarrus High School for the Impact Through Education Awards. At this time, I'd like to invite any members of the Patriots Elementary School administrative team to come forward so you can stand with your students and staff. Our first honoree from Patriots Elementary School this evening is Alexa Federico. Would Alexa and her family please come forward?
Alexa is a fifth grade student at Patriots Elementary School. She is a studious and hard-working individual. She's always looking for anything that she can do to help another student, faculty member, and community member. She's kind-hearted and is willing to give 100% of her effort. She strives to make her school and community a better place by participating in drives and fundraisers. She's an excellent student and a true pleasure to teach. Patriots Elementary School is proud of her and all of her efforts in the school and with her education. Congratulations, Alexa, on receiving the Impact Through Education Award for Patriots Elementary. [applause] Our second honoree from Patriots Elementary School is Zachary Bingler. Would Zachary and his family please come forward?
Zachary was nominated for the Impact Through Education Award for several reasons. He is a student who is actively involved in many areas of the school. He's on the safety patrol and will also fill in wherever he is needed, such as flag duty or station in the hall or the car rider line. He participated on the Fire and Life Safety Bowl team, and he is involved in the bike club after school. Zachary looks for ways to help others in the classroom and tries to avoid conflict. He is respectful to his peers and school staff in his words and actions. He works to make his class a better place and is always willing to do the jobs that others may pass on. He is reliable and always takes responsibility for his actions. Patriots Elementary is proud to present Zachary with the Impact Through Education Award. Congratulations.
Our next honoree from Patriots Elementary School is Ms. Brenda Eason. Would Ms. Eason and her family please come forward?
At 8:15 every morning, a class of third-grade students begins their day with a certain air of excitement and anticipation of what interesting, challenging, and enjoyable activities their teacher has in store for them. This is not just the case on certain days, but every day in Mrs. Eason's classroom. In sports, the term "playing hard from buzzer to buzzer" is used to describe athletes who give maximum effort so that at the end of the game, they can truly say they left it all on the court. Mrs. Eason leaves it all in the classroom every day. She goes from bell to bell, and she does not hold anything back. She loves her students, and they love her right back. They want to work for her, please her, and in the process, they learn. Students in Mrs. Eason's class do things regularly. Science and math are predominantly hands-on. Language arts are experienced, not just read or written. Social studies are discussed and explained, after which the students demonstrate their understanding by doing something and learning from each other. Principal Phil Hull says, "I've never visited Mrs. Eason's classroom when I didn't feel better when I left than when I entered." And if that is true with her students, I believe that is pretty awesome. She is also a leader amongst her peers, but she does not go about this in the typical manner. As grade-level chair, she models for her colleagues the importance of staying focused on students and learning. She can lead a PLC meeting in such a way as to involve all team members without being pushy or bossy, which is sometimes difficult when you're dealing with strong personalities or different perspectives. She deflects tension with humor, is always prepared, and finds ways to celebrate successes. She is highly respected by the entire school community, parents, staff, and students. She is versatile enough to teach any grade level effectively. She does not see herself as a specialist, but rather as a teacher, and is proud to be that. Patriots is proud to present Mrs. Brenda Eason, Teacher Extraordinaire, as an Impact Through Education Award recipient. Congratulations.
And our final recipient from Patriots Elementary School is Ms. Janet Cragan. Would Ms. Cragan and her family please come forward?
There are people who follow their job descriptions to the letter and do a wonderful job, and then there are those individuals who do so much more than the job description specifies. That would be Data Manager Janet Cragan at Patriots Elementary School, and that is the reason she was selected for this recognition. Data managers are notoriously overworked and underpaid. Completing daily attendance, weekly and monthly reports, registering and withdrawing students, and tracking down and keeping up with all the required documentation and files on each student are just some of the things that are required of this position. In addition, they're sometimes asked to be a backup nurse, the receptionist, pull a regular shift of morning car duty in all kinds of weather. Principal Phil Hull says, "I would like to ask her to be backup administrator too, but I'd be afraid she would do it better than I could." She does all of that, and she does it with such a positive attitude that she's basically the unofficial PR person for the school, and she doesn't even realize it. Nervous parents who are new to our school are immediately put at ease when dealing with her when registering their child, and they come away knowing that their children will be well taken care of. Even though it is clear that she goes above and beyond the call of what is expected of her, perhaps her biggest impact is the difference she has made in the lives of some of the struggling students at the school. Students who simply need someone to care, someone to count on, someone to provide a secure place for them to go when they just need some one-on-one support. She has made such amazing strides in the social and academic development of several students in the school's first two years that they now come by to see her just to say hello or show her something that they've done that they are proud of. It's a nine-year-old's way of saying, "Thank you for caring enough to help me." Principal Hull adds, "If there were more of us like her, we could do even greater things in the lives of children." He continued, "When I completed her evaluation last year, there was no place on the form to address all that she does, so I summed it up by saying, 'Janet is an outstanding employee, but more than that, she's an outstanding human being.'" Patriots Elementary School is proud to present Janet Cragan with an Impact Through Education Award. [applause]
And our final recipient from Patriots Elementary School is Ms. Janet Cragan. Would Ms. Cragan and her family please come forward?
There are people who follow their job descriptions to the letter and do a wonderful job, and then there are those individuals who do so much more than the job description specifies. That would be Data Manager Janet Cragan at Patriots Elementary School, and that is the reason she was selected for this recognition. Data managers are notoriously overworked and underpaid. Completing daily attendance, weekly and monthly reports, registering and withdrawing students, and tracking down and keeping up with all the required documentation and files on each student are just some of the things that are required of this position. In addition, they're sometimes asked to be a backup nurse, the receptionist, pull a regular shift of morning car duty in all kinds of weather. Principal Phil Hull says, "I would like to ask her to be backup administrator too, but I'd be afraid she would do it better than I could." She does all of that, and she does it with such a positive attitude that she's basically the unofficial PR person for the school, and she doesn't even realize it. Nervous parents who are new to our school are immediately put at ease when dealing with her when registering their child, and they come away knowing that their children will be well taken care of. Even though it is clear that she goes above and beyond the call of what is expected of her, perhaps her biggest impact is the difference she has made in the lives of some of the struggling students at the school. Students who simply need someone to care, someone to count on, someone to provide a secure place for them to go when they just need some one-on-one support. She has made such amazing strides in the social and academic development of several students in the school's first two years that they now come by to see her just to say hello or show her something that they've done that they are proud of. It's a nine-year-old's way of saying, "Thank you for caring enough to help me." Principal Hull adds, "If there were more of us like her, we could do even greater things in the lives of children." He continued, "When I completed her evaluation last year, there was no place on the form to address all that she does, so I summed it up by saying, 'Janet is an outstanding employee, but more than that, she's an outstanding human being.'" Patriots Elementary School is proud to present Janet Cragan with an Impact Through Education Award. [applause]
Would any members of the Northwest Cabarrus High School administrative team please come forward to stand with your students and staff? Our first honoree from Northwest Cabarrus High School is Sarah Ensley. Would Sarah and her family please come forward? Sarah Ensley is a very gifted individual and most deserving of the Impact Through Education Award. She is a senior at Northwest Cabarrus High School and has served Northwest Cabarrus in many ways. She's a very talented student, participating in many creative and artistic fine arts. Sarah has participated in dance since kindergarten, theater since ninth grade, and the Beta Club since her 11th grade year. She's taken her gift of performing into the community, participating in the Peter and the Wolf performance for the Jeff Gordon Children's Hospital, and is also the recipient of the Daughters of the American Revolution Good Citizen Award. Sarah has also taken a leadership role at Northwest Cabarrus, serving as the Vice President of the Drama Club. The school is most proud of Sarah's accomplishments and apprised to say she embodies the philosophy of the Impact Through Education Award. Sarah is taking her talents to the next level and will continue to dance at the University of South Carolina, where she is accepting the Cooper's Scholars Award. Congratulations, Sarah, for making an Impact Through Education at Northwest Cabarrus. [applause] Would William and his family please come forward? Will England exemplifies the true meaning of the Impact Through Education Award. He is a senior at Northwest Cabarrus High School and has served Northwest in many ways. He has many accomplishments at Northwest Cabarrus, including participating in football and track all four years of high school, as well as basketball in ninth and 10th grades and indoor track in 10th and 11th grades. He believes in leading his school and does so strongly through his time at Northwest Cabarrus as the junior class president, senior class president, football team captain, and track team captain. Will's positive impact at Northwest Cabarrus is seen throughout the school as he works to build up the student body through positive morale and excellent leadership. He participates in a vast array of school clubs and leads the multicultural club as the vice president. He also takes his gift of leading and helping others into the community by participating in Special Olympics, coaching at the Boys and Girls Club, and helping with the Jimmy Murphy Christmas Dinner. He's taking his leadership to the next level at Lenora Rhine College with a scholarship in track. Will truly embodies the philosophy of the Impact Through Education Award, and for that, we say thank you and congratulations. [applause] He'll be going to Winthrop, not Lenora Rhine. Sorry, my script is incorrect. My apologies. Our next honoree from Northwest Cabarrus is Ms. Casey Delisanti. Would Ms. Delisanti and her family please come forward? Mrs. Delisanti has served Northwest Cabarrus High School for the past four years as a U.S. History and Civics teacher to both regular education and special needs students. On a daily basis, Mrs. Delisanti works with students whose capabilities range from above-average, average, below-average, as well as students who are identified as part of the school's at-risk population. Mrs. Delisanti rises beyond the required expectations of instruction and works diligently to ensure the success of all of her students. She seeks out opportunities to collaborate with her peers and creates dynamic lesson plans, as well as help students who are performing well and assist those who are not performing at the subject level standard. Mrs. Delisanti soars beyond administrative expectations in her efforts to strengthen the curriculum and empowers other teachers to better communicate their subject area through meaningful instruction and activities. The administration at Northwest Cabarrus High School is excited to have Mrs. Delisanti as the recipient of an Impact Through Education Award. Her hard work and dedication are truly commendable, and Northwest Cabarrus High School considers itself lucky to have a dedicated, hard-working, and enthusiastic social studies teacher. Congratulations. [applause] Bland. Would Mr. Bland and his family please come forward? Mr. Larry Bland has been a dedicated employee of Northwest Cabarrus High School since 1984, where he has served as head custodian. There is no man or woman alive who knows the Northwest Cabarrus campus and its multiple buildings and structures better than Larry Bland. Since its founding in the fall of 1966, Northwest Cabarrus High School has been led by ten different principals, and Mr. Bland has served nine of them. Larry is the epitome of the silent but very effective employee. Every day, he quietly and unobtrusively makes Northwest Cabarrus High School run smoothly. He never seeks personal glory or gain. Whenever he is absent, it is apparent to everyone. At the close of the 2012-2013 school year, Mr. Bland plans to retire. Northwest Cabarrus High School is dreading that day. There is no one who has had more of an impact on the school's day-to-day operations than Larry Bland, and there is no one who deserves this award more. Congratulations and thank you.
This is one of the highlights of the month, is when we do these Impact Through Education Awards and see everyone show up like they always do. We're gonna move on, board members, to 5.2, which is the Hilbisch Ford Teacher of the Month Award. Mr. Tim Vaughn's usually here when we do this, but he's not here tonight, so we have Dr. Shepherd and Ms. Ronnie Boone to make this presentation.
Mr. Chair, board members, thank you very much. As always, I want to thank our friends at Hilbisch Ford for sponsoring this wonderful award for our deserving teachers. Cabarrus County Schools is grateful for the partnership, and we appreciate the firm's generosity. Tonight, I'm pleased to announce that the Cabarrus County Schools Hilbisch Ford Teacher of the Month for May is Ms. Melissa Brantley. Melissa and her family and friends and administrators, come forward, please. Ms. Brantley is a third-grade teacher at William Irvin Elementary School. She was nominated for this month's award by a parent who wrote, "Good teachers not only help students with their studies, but they also help mold their overall personality." Ms. Brantley puts forth her best efforts to teach her students all that she can, and she also wishes that they do well in life. She plays such an important role in the lives of her students, she is an outstanding teacher who does her job right. And Ms. Brantley, on behalf of the Cabarrus County Schools, we thank you for all that you do to ensure that your students are learning, but also for all that you do to ensure that they're growing into caring and productive citizens. Now, Ms. Boone, we'll present you a couple of items, and we congratulate you on the Hilbisch Ford Teacher of the Month.
Teacher of the Year Award, and we're gonna have to come to the podium Mr. Jeff Joyce and Ms. Kathy Auger. She's there waiting on us, but before you get started, Ms. Auger, I'd like to call on Ms. Minnet, and she's one of the founders, if not the founder, of the Cabarrus County Education Foundation, and I think she wanted to make a few comments to recognize some of the board members that's here tonight. Ms. Minnet.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to acknowledge that we just had a reception upstairs, and some of our board members are here this evening, and I'd like to call them their names. Michael Bergner, Michael, wave your arm. He's our vice chair, and I'm not sure they've come down from cleaning up yet, but Jeanette Trexler, whom many of you know from years of service here in the administrative office, and Glenda Thomas, who was a longtime principal in our system as well, as well as Mr. Joyce. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Minnet. This evening, we're honored to recognize our Cabarrus County Schools' Teacher of the Year School and District winners. The selection of the Cabarrus County Schools' Teacher of the Year begins at our schools, where a winner is selected by his or her peers. From there, each Schools' Teacher of the Year is invited to participate in the district process, which includes interviews by a review panel. This panel's composed of former District Teachers of the Year, a school administrator, and a central office administrator. I would like to publicly recognize and thank this year's panel, which included Janelle Patterson, Beth Jewell, Lenora Baron, Fatima Fullmore, and Ben Alred. Based on those interviews, the panel selects five finalists, and then the panel actually visits each finalist's classroom to observe them in action. A winner is chosen from the five finalists and announced at a breakfast hosted by SunTrust Bank. And as Ms. Minnet mentioned, school finalists were also honored at a reception this afternoon sponsored by the Education Foundation. We extend our appreciation for their involvement. The person selected as the Cabarrus County Schools' Teacher of the Year moves on to compete at the regional level and possibly to state competition. Our Teacher of the Year is awarded several honors. They receive a laptop through our technology department. Also, there is a generous grant that's been received this year from the Hayes Foundation to promote international-mindedness, and this grant- to promote international-mindedness, and this grant funds travel for two Cabarrus County Schools' teachers each year to travel abroad with a team through the Center for International Understanding. And finally, we're very excited by the sponsorship of SunTrust Bank, which gives $1,000 cash prize to our District Teacher of the Year and to each of our finalists who receive a check for $250. So I'd like to introduce our teachers to you this evening. I'm going to call the names of those who could be with us first, and then I'll introduce you to the finalists and our Cabarrus County Schools' Teacher of the Year. Melissa Logan, Bethel Elementary. I'll go ahead and read all the names, and then if we can hold our applause until the end. Lacy Palmer, Beverly Hills Elementary. Eddie Jo Lane, C.C. Griffin. Edie, thank you. Mandy Porter, Concord High. Ben Mastin, Concord Middle. Laurie Taylor, Cox Mill Elementary. Laura Sosa, Harrisburg Elementary. Christopher Balga, Hickory Ridge High. Paul Miller, Hickory Ridge Middle. Tracy LaCombe, J. and Fries Magnet. Denise Yates, J.M. Robinson High. Bailey Smith, Long School. Susan Earhart, Mount Pleasant Elementary. Michael Landers, Mount Pleasant High. Stacy Collins, Northwest Cabarrus Middle. Mary Ferguson, Patriots Elementary. Jeronda Kennedy, R. Brown MacAllister. Krista Bugravich, Rocky River Elementary. Susan Johnson, Odell Elementary. Emily LeFave, Weddington Hills Elementary. And Tommy Crumley, Weincoff Elementary. So let's give our hands to this group. And now I'd like to share with you the finalists and our Teacher of the Year. Leah Zufall, A.T. Allen Elementary. Andrea Sol, Central Cabarrus High. Sarah Rochelle, Charles E. Bogar Elementary. Molly Carlberg, Royal Oaks Elementary. And our District Teacher of the Year, Mariko Weinhardt, from Carl Afer Elementary. Congratulations to all of you, and I don't know if you can turn back around this way and come before and have a chance to shake hands with the board. It's wonderful. Congratulations again to all of you.
That's always a fun time of the year, too, you know, for the Teacher of the Year. Once again, congratulations to all the recipients. All right, board members, we're going to move on now to 5.4 on your agenda, the Governor's School selections. Dr. Cheryl Milam at the podium, she's ready to go.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The Governor's School of North Carolina is the oldest statewide summer residential program for gifted and talented high school students in the nation. The six-week program is open to rising juniors and seniors and is located on two campuses, Governor's School West, which began in 1963 at Salem College in Winston-Salem, and Governor's School East, which began in 1978 at Meredith College in Raleigh. Participants are expected to be producers of knowledge, problem solvers, and problem finders in an academic discipline or in an area of fine arts. The following students have been selected through a rigorous nomination process to represent Cabarrus County Schools at this year's Governor's School. Students, when I call your name, please come up to the front, line up across the front while Dr. Lauder presents you with your award. In social science, from Concord High School, Casey Aldrich. In art, from Concord High School, Ashley Bougie. In natural science, from J.M. Robinson High School, Bradley Burden. In Spanish, from Mount Pleasant High School, Whitney Hurtado. In trombone, from J.M. Robinson High School, Adam Kunicz. In art, from Concord High School, Michelle Mills. In French, from Concord High School, Sally Moore. In Spanish, from Concord High School, Grant O'Brien. In natural science, from Cox Mill High School, Taylor Rothemel. In art, from J.M. Robinson, Lauren Solenberger. Congratulations to you all, and may you have a wonderfully stimulating summer.
Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely, Ms. Burton-Ball.
Thank you. I just wanted to make a note, and Dr. Milam is probably aware, I'm not sure where she slipped out to there. The Governor's School funding was cut in the legislative budget this past year, and it is to the graciousness of private donors that the program continues. So I just wanted to mention that, that we appreciate whoever those donors are, but it's through their graciousness that the program continues.
Okay, board members, 5.5, we'll move on in our recognitions to the National Council of Excellence and National Gold Council of Excellence, and we'll have Ms. Donna Smith at the podium, and she's there waiting on it. I love to see them when they're ready to go, don't you guys? Ready to go? Okay, Ms. Smith, go ahead.
Thank you. I'd like to invite Nicole Hill to come forward and join me, please. She's representing the administrative team of Concord Middle School, because I have great news to share. Concord Middle School has been named a National Council of Excellence by the National Association of Student Councils. Additionally, the council is one of 16 middle-level councils to receive the esteemed honor of being named a National Gold Council of Excellent Award by the association. This award is given for councils that have an exemplary record of leadership, service, and activities that improve the school and the community. Tonight, I am so pleased to present to you members of the Concord Middle School Executive Board and their advisors. Please come forward as I call your names, because joining us tonight are Michaela Byers... Okay. Fisher Fullerton. Thank you. Ben McGuire. Faith Martin. Brandon Moore. Claire Summer... Excuse me, Sumner. And I'd like to invite the advisors. Cameron Kingshill. Jessica Mitchell. And Craig Waskey or Waskewitz. One other accolade tonight for the council is Faith Martin has earned induction into the North Carolina Association of Student Council's Hall of Fame. Congratulations. We give congratulations to Faith, the Concord Middle School Student Council, and their advisors for their dedication and commitment to excellence. And now with your photo shots, we invite you to greet the board. Thank you very much.
Okay, we're going to move to 5.6, where we have Ms. Ronnie Boone at the podium to do our student art awards.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Board members, Dr. Shepherd, the artwork of two students at Weincoff Elementary School has garnered state and national attention. Tonight, I'm pleased to present to you Ananda Lob and Justin Hartzell. Would Ananda and Justin please come forward with your art teacher, Ms. Amy Mills? Justin's not here, okay. And I'm sorry, I didn't see Mr. Kelly back there. Ananda's piece, "The Lovely Turtle," which she's got a copy of there for everyone to see, was selected to be featured in the North Carolina General Assembly's Youth Art Exhibition. The inspiration for her piece came from a lesson her class studied about the native Kuna people of Panama. Her work is one of 14 pieces from students across the state that will be on display in the north lobby of the State Legislative Building in Raleigh. Ananda and the other students whose artwork was selected will be honored at a reception this month at the House of Representatives. Justin's artwork was selected as the winner of the Young Masters Art Competition for students in grades K through 2. His piece was inspired by the famed American landscaped artist Georgia O'Keeffe, who is known for her large, close-up paintings of flowers. Justin's untitled piece featured orange and yellow flowers set against a violet-colored background, and I do have a photograph of Justin's piece to show since he's not here to share it with everyone. That's his piece, and that is Justin. Young Masters is a national franchise that showcases children's artwork through keepsakes. Justin's prize package included a $500 check for the school's art program. Congratulations, Ananda and Justin, on your art awards. Please allow the board members to congratulate you.
Okay, we have one final award tonight. This is the Skills USA Competition, state award winners, and we have Ms. Lisa Conger at the podium, and so it's up to you.
Good evening. Tonight, I'm here to present the Cabarrus County First Place Winners from the 2012 North Carolina Skills USA Competition. Skills USA was founded in 1965 as a national nonprofit organization serving teachers, high school, and college students who are preparing for careers in trade, technical, and skilled service occupations. You may remember this organization as VICA. It is both an honor and a pleasure for me to present these young folks tonight. They won at regional levels and on the state levels, and will continue on to the nationals. Please hold your applause while I call each student and their teacher advisor. In the post-secondary masonry division, Jordan Hartzell, Central Cabarrus High School, and his instructor, Mr. Todd Hartzell. In the firefighting competition, Jacob Whitley and Chief Barlow from Concord High School, they were unable to be here tonight. In aviation maintenance technology, Bridget Samaraki from J. Robinson High School with her instructor, Mr. Jeff Murray. Also, from J.M. Robinson High School, in motorcycle service technology, Mr. Brandon Yates. And finally, from Northwest Cabarrus High School, in auto one, Colby Holder and his instructor, Mr. Mike Porter. I'd like to congratulate each of you and wish you the very best at national competition. If you'll please step forward and allow the board to congratulate you.
Okay, that wraps up our awards recognitions portion, so now we're going to move on to 6.1, the approval of the minutes. Board members, you've had a chance to review the minutes of the April 2 work session, the April 16 business meeting. Do I have a motion that the minutes be approved as presented? Have a motion?
Second.
Have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Board members, now we're going to move on to 7.0, the reports section, and I'd like to ask Ms. Kathy Auger to the podium, where she's going to be talking to us about the salary study that we had started here a few months back. Ms. Auger.
Good evening again. While Cabarrus County Schools seeks to provide a positive nurturing environment to recruit and retain employees, it is also essential that salaries are reasonably competitive with comparable school districts and for certain positions with other public and private business entities. Our recruitment and retention of stellar employees is critical to our mission. For this purpose, you approved a salary study to be completed for Cabarrus County Schools. This evening, in recognition of district and county budget timelines, John Ansavino and Stephanie Davis of Springstead Incorporated are bringing...
I'm sorry.
That might be better. Okay, now, how do we advance this?
It's just scrolling down.
How do we advance?
You can use that.
Okay. Okay. This evening, we want to touch on the overview of the study process, the objectives of the Cabarrus County Study, the milestones that we've accomplished to date, as I said, our preliminary findings and recommendations, and our final tasks and next steps. Very briefly, an overview of the process. The Cabarrus County School Division issued a request for proposal in September of 2011, discussed the issue at a couple of meetings, and then in December of 2011, decided to move forward. That was around December 6. And of course, because of the holidays, the school holidays, we got, we began to gather information initially, but had to really put off a lot of our interaction with employees until after they were back after the first of the year. So in January of 2012, we spent a week onsite, Ann, Stephanie, and myself, working with employees. This was an interactive process, a process where we spent a good deal of time finding out what employees did in their jobs, finding out what the policies of the school division were in regard, the school district were in regard to compensation. And to do that, we conducted forty-six project kickoff meetings over a period of five days where we spoke to employees about the study, about what the outcomes might be, what expectations they might have and maybe shouldn't have, and also how we were going to gather information from them. The meetings that we conducted included one-on-one and group discussions with the superintendent, with your human resources director, department and division directors, division superintendents, principals, assistant principals, and district employees. The objectives of the salary study, as stated in your request for proposal, were to, first of all, take a look at the competitiveness of your school division, district, in conjunction with salary ranges and wages as compared to the market. And that market was, has been defined as area and regional school divisions as well, districts, as well as other communities, public entities here in the area. We looked, as I said, at the district's current compensation policies and practices, that is, how you pay employees, how you move them through your ranges. We were also tasked with establishing internal equity between positions, that is, like positions with like education and experience and like requirements, were they paid at about the same level? Another objective of the study that we were tasked with was ensuring that your job descriptions, your position descriptions comply with applicable laws and regulations, and that they were accurately describing what the employees did, particularly with all of the consolidation of jobs that have occurred over the recent years and all the changes in jobs that have occurred as well. Also, when we leave the study and we complete the study next month and we come back to the school district, we will have a system in place for you to administer this going forward so that you don't have to call on our firm to assist you as new positions are created or as positions are reclassified. We will teach your human resources staff how to use the system, how to move it, how to work with it going forward, and how to update it. Another objective of the salary study was to update the district's current classification system and salary ranges. So as we've noted, we are gathering information in conjunction with that. And we were also tasked with reviewing the exempt, non-exempt status for all positions under the Fair Labor Standards Act. We are in the process right now of developing a pay philosophy for the district. As I mentioned, we gathered information on compensation levels from other public entities within the region. And the pay philosophy that we are developing will revolve around providing fair and equitable compensation for school, school district employees, balancing the market and internal equity with a competitive pay structure that is, you know, with consideration for your financial resources. And we recognize, having both worked in the public sector, Stephanie and myself, that resources have been limited over the last few years and remain limited. So we will be developing some phasing plans for you to address the issues that we see in our findings. And then finally, developing an understandable compensation program for district employees will be a focus of that pay philosophy for the district.
One of the things, one of the objectives of our presentation this evening is to talk to you about what we've done over the past few months and what's left to be done with your project. Milestones accomplished over the last three months have been, obviously, the kickoff of the project in January. We've receiveded three hundred position analysis questionnaires. And basically, those are how we assess each job or class description for the district. That is our tool to gather information about key components of a position, whether that's the task, the education, the skill level necessary, the level of work, who they supervise, a variety of issues that we gather through that tool. We've received over three hundred questionnaires representing approximately one hundred and seventy-five job classes for the district. When we talk about three hundred, obviously, there are more than three hundred employees here with the district. But we've had employees work together. If there are similar jobs, similar class descriptions, for one particular class of description, they have worked together to complete one PAQ, really serving as an efficiency measure when we're gathering the data. We've issued the salary survey to the identified and approved area benchmarks. We'll talk about those in just a second. We've reviewed and revised the proposed job classifications. In fact, we have conducted telephone conference calls with each of your division heads, your assistant superintendents, your associate superintendents. We've also reviewed those pretty much two or three times between your department directors and in our company, our consultants and our staff, to ensure that we are creating job descriptions and class descriptions that accurately reflect the job duties of the positions. And over the past two months, we have conducted in-depth analysis of the salary survey data. Just to briefly talk about the schedule, key milestones, project initiation in January, forty-six individual and group meetings completed on-site, draft class descriptions in February and March, again, processing over three hundred PAQs, position analysis questionnaires, and to approximately one hundred and seventy-five job classes. In March, we distributed and received the salary survey. We distributed the survey to twenty-seven recipients. Over the month of April, department directors, we've had initial review of the class descriptions. Preliminary descriptions have been developed. We're still going through that process. Salary surveys were received in April. We've receiveded at this point fourteen salary surveys. That's a fifty percent response rate. We are working with your staff here at the district to reach out to those other survey recipients so that we can try to get additional data before the study's complete. And in April, we're conducting and have conducted the FLSA status review and finalizing the status for the new class descriptions.
The classification plan development is really the first component of this study. And as I said, we've used an interactive process and we always use an interactive process in working with the entities that we are engaged with. As Stephanie mentioned, your employees worked as teams to fill out some of the position analysis questionnaires. Some departments or some positions where we had single incumbents or a limited number of incumbents in the position, they filled them out individually. This is a process where we believe that the employees of any organization really know what they're doing in their job, sometimes better than their supervisors. So we first engage the employees in filling out the position analysis questionnaire. It moves on to the next level, to their supervisors who review the information, who confirm the information that the employees have been provided, or may add or suggest that information be deleted. That has been completed, and we've also done a task analysis for all of your positions to make sure that that data is confirmed and is accurate. And as Stephanie said, it's been through multiple reviews with your staff here. So the position descriptions are essentially done. We have developed over one hundred and seventy-five different new position descriptions for the various jobs here in the, in the school district. They include a position title. Each position description includes a position title, a general definition of work, the essential functions performed in the job as identified by the employees and their supervisors, the examples of typical tasks, the necessary minimum knowledge required for the position, the skills and abilities required for the position, the physical requirements of the position, the Fair Labor Standards Act designation as determined by Springstead, the education and experience requirements as minimum requirements, and then any special qualifications. We have given, because of the various requirements here in the school district and in all school districts that we work with, we paid really close attention to any occupational qualifications such as licensing, certifications, and special training, those types of things that are necessary to retain the status of the position. A number of your employees, ranging from some of your folks who are working in the trades on up, of course, to your teachers, are required to have a number of certifications, licenses, and special trainings for their position, and that is noted on the position descriptions.
As part of our preliminary presentation, we are going to talk a little bit about terminology, and this is more for your reference as we go through the process and when we come back in June. But in terms of classification planning, the job class is simply a group of jobs that are considered to be substantially similar for pay purposes. That's your job classification. Position descriptions, we're developing those, and we are finalizing those position descriptions, which again, are just the general definition of the work. The classification, that system is assigning grades to the different classifications in a hierarchical manner and reflective of the organization and of the district. Thank you. And job evaluation, we'll talk a little bit about Springstead's methodology for job evaluation, but a consistent and systematic method of evaluating positions and ranking them. And then internal equity, one of the objectives from your request for proposal was ensuring that we have internal equity. Similar jobs with similar duties, similar knowledge, skills, and abilities are paid similarly.
Now, there are two components to a pay plan. The first is job evaluation. That is, where do positions lie in relationship to one another as far as importance of the position and the complexity of the position? To determine that, we conduct a job evaluation process on all jobs in any organization, public organization that we work with. And we use a system called the Systematic Analysis and Factor Evaluation System. We call it SAFE for short. It is a copyrighted system. It is a system which has been tested in the federal courts. And if you think we have it bad here in the mid-Atlantic dealing with the state government and the state agencies, in Minnesota, they have the Minnesota Pay Equity Act, which requires all public entities to submit their pay levels to the state for review every two years to ensure that internal equity exists. And we are tested against the Minnesota Pay Equity and have been successful there. And we figure we can be successful anywhere if we can do that. The system lays out with, it's a point-based system like the HAY system or a wide range of other systems that are used to objectively analyze jobs. We first determine whether or not, where a job falls, whether or not it be a basic skillset job, possibly in the custodial area or in the blue-collar area, on up to executive level positions. And we classify that into one of those six categories. And then we begin to evaluate the position using the nine factors that you see on the screen, ranging from training and ability to level of work, on to impact of end results. And each one of those has a range of points. And dependent upon the position and what the position has included as part of its requirements, we evaluate the position based upon those criteria. For example, if you don't supervise anyone, you don't get any points. If you supervise a hundred people, you may get fifty points. And those are all added together as part of the nine categories. And at the end, we look at the positions, as Stephanie said, in a hierarchical manner from low to high, to determine whether or not the positions lay out in a logical manner based upon our knowledge of the entity that we are working with.
As we said, the salary survey has been sent to the benchmark districts and municipalities, private businesses, and there are also two hospitals. When we send, develop those benchmarks, that really is a cooperative process with your district staff to make sure that we're capturing the school districts that you're competing with and we're evaluating that as well. There were fourteen, excuse me, there were, the school districts listed on your slide are shown for you, excuse me, nine of those have responded to your survey. We will be reaching out to them once again through email, through personal calls, to try to get additional data. Slide fifteen shows the municipalities, the private company that we used, and the two, excuse me, the Northeast Hospital and the University of North Carolina. We sometimes have difficulty getting responses from private businesses for privacy information and for privacy issues that they have releasing their salary data. But we're going to continue to work and reach out. We're also going to work with your district staff to reach out for additional salary survey information. Again, nine school districts' data has been utilized for development of the proposed compensation plan. Five county governments' data has been utilized for the new plan. The survey data at this point really is sufficient for the development of the plan, but we're going to continue to go out and reach out to additional survey recipients to gather additional data. Part of the salary survey is identifying, of the one hundred and seventy-five job classifications, we will survey a good portion of those. For Cabarrus County, we surveyed sixty-two positions, thirty-five percent of the total classes and positions. Based on the data that we've received thus far, eleven positions were not utilized as part of our analysis this evening, either the data didn't make sense compared to your data, or it was insufficient. Not each survey recipient will respond to each position because some positions are different district to district. Also, when we send out that salary survey, we provide a description of the position so that those districts can look and say, yes, that is an accounts payable clerk here, or it doesn't fit how we have our accounts payable clerk. So we do provide some additional level of information in gathering the survey data. As we talk about pay, as we talk about compensation, a couple of the terminologies and words that we'll talk about, first of all, compression. What is compression? You will hear us talk about, as we develop your compensation plan, as we develop your new pay scale, how do employees fit on that new pay scale? And one of the things that we will try to attempt to resolve is compression. That simply means that people who are being hired relatively new, maybe within a year, are close in pay to people who have more
but we're going to continue to go out and reach out to additional survey recipients to gather additional data. Part of the salary survey is identifying, of the one hundred and seventy-five job classifications, we will survey a good portion of those. For Cabarrus County, we surveyed sixty-two positions, thirty-five percent of the total classes and positions. Based on the data that we've received thus far, eleven positions were not utilized as part of our analysis this evening, either the data didn't make sense compared to your data, or it was insufficient. Not each survey recipient will respond to each position because some positions are different district to district. Also, when we send out that salary survey, we provide a description of the position so that those districts can look and say, yes, that is an accounts payable clerk here, or it doesn't fit how we have our accounts payable clerk. So, we do provide some additional level of information in gathering the survey data. As we talk about pay, as we talk about compensation, a couple of the terminologies and words that we'll talk about, first of all, compression. What is compression? You will hear us talk about, as we develop your compensation plan, as we develop your new pay scale, how do employees fit on that new pay scale? And one of the things that we will try to attempt to resolve is compression. That simply means that people who are being hired relatively new, maybe within a year, are close in pay to people who have more tenure. And so, we'll try to address compression through our salary survey to reward people for years of service here with the district. Your pay philosophy, as John said, part of what we're working through over the next month is developing a pay philosophy for the district that talks about internal equity, external competitiveness, and employee performance. Pay grades, again, as we develop your classification system and developing your grades that way, we're also assigning your pay ranges to those grades. So, we'll be developing that as well. The midpoint, part of your salary pay grades that will be developed and are being developed, we will look at the market. And you're going to hear me talk about market as we go through some of the preliminary impacts. Your market or your midpoint is simply the same thing. It's what is, on average, what are other districts, municipalities paying for the different types of positions? And then progression through pay grades. Again, when we talk about pay philosophy, compression issues, rewarding employees with service here with the district, we're also going to talk about, in the future, how do employees move through your new pay scale? Based on our current data, based on our salary survey information, we're going to talk about a few of our current findings and recommendations. And really, this was the crux of your preliminary presentation tonight. There are eighteen school district positions that are identified as competitive in the market. That means when we have identified the market or the midpoint for pay for positions, what we determine to be competitive is those positions that are being paid up to five percent of the midpoint or up to below the midpoint five percent. So, you have about a ten percent spread there. Eighteen of the district positions are identified as competitive in the market. The average for those eighteen positions is point five-nine percent off of the market. Okay? So, what we've determined is what the midpoint is for those eighteen positions, and on average, you're less than one percent away from that market pay. That is very good for those eighteen positions. However, there are twenty-eight positions that are more than five percent below the market. So, for the other, remember, we surveyed sixty-two positions, twenty-eight of those positions have midpoints or market pay that are below the market. And on average, they're fourteen point five-six percent below the market. So, in terms of how does that reconcile, that means that you have twenty-eight positions, on average, that are almost fifteen percent below the pay grade, below the pay for the market. And then, based on our sixty-two positions in the data, five positions are more than five percent above the market. On average, you have your survey positions at about ten percent above market. That could be due to longevity in the position. It could be due to education. It could be due to the market and the necessity for the district to pay higher based on recruitment. And those are some of the things that we'll figure out over the course of the next month. Salary ranges, so we talked about that market and that midpoint. You also have a range from your minimum to your maximum. The district will have a new pay scale. Your salary range comparisons, when we look at minimums, what are you paying for the minimum of the position, are six point four-three percent below the market minimums. And we have gathered that information from your survey recipients. Salary ranges overall reflect midpoints, which are about seven percent below market, six point eight-one percent below market. And then your maximums, how much is the maximum pay for a particular position, reflect seven point five-six percent below market. Significant classes of positions at this point that are impacted by the salary data include the bus drivers, clerical assistants, clerical positions, other types of clerical positions, child nutrition program assistants, non-certified director-level positions, technology positions, and we have about four of those technology positions that we benchmarked, and coordinator positions, media, technology coordinator positions, those types. We've also gathered information on teacher, assistant principal, and principal supplements, and they too are below market. Supplement comparisons, teacher supplements, on average, based on your benchmark communities, and I do want to make one clarification on the supplement information. We did receive information for all of the districts that we surveyed, supplement information. So, remember, we talked, where nine salary surveys were received from nine districts? We did receive supplement information for all of the districts that we have on the list. Your teacher supplements, on average, three thousand five hundred and six dollars. Cabarrus County School District average is two thousand two hundred and forty-five. Your variance of about twelve hundred dollars on average, or thirty-six percent below. Principal supplements, again, the average supplement for responding school districts, and that included all of them, eleven thousand five seventy-two. Cabarrus County average, eight thousand two fifty, with a variance of thirty-three hundred dollars, or twenty-eight percent below. Supplement comparisons, assistant principals, average supplement for responding school districts, five thousand eight seventy-six. Your average supplement in Cabarrus, three thousand seven fifty-seven, a variance of two thousand, or thirty-six percent below market. So, financial impacts, and again, this kind of brings your preliminary report to a close, but your financial impacts on compensation levels, at this point, are anticipated to be approximately seven percent for non-teachers certified paid positions. This is everybody except for teachers, principals, assistant principals. The total salaries for everybody other than your teachers, principals, assistant principals is forty-six point five million dollars. So, preliminary salary impacts are three point nine million, including benefits. So, we have include the benefits in that amount. Financial impacts for teacher supplements, to pay based on the average supplement, is anticipated to be two point three million. Financial impacts for principal supplements is anticipated to be a hundred and fifteen thousand. Assistant principals, a hundred and nineteen thousand. When we look at all of the financial impacts district-wide, the total to be six point five million dollars, including benefits. As part of our final study, as part of our final processes, we will work with your staff to determine how will we phase that in? Do we phase that in and at what levels? And one of the options we've talked about is phasing that in over a five-year period.
So, what are the final tasks and our next steps to be completed? First of all, we need to finalize the classification plan. There are still a couple of jobs which are being audited, a few tweaks being made, but they're essentially done. We also need to finalize your new pay scales and the compensation plan. Again, as data becomes available, there will be some minor adjustments, but that will be available to you in final form in June. We will be developing final implementation options. You know, from two thousand eight up until now, there have been very few public classification and compensation studies done. It just wasn't feasible because of the economy. But we're beginning to see folks take a look at where their employees are and where they are from a market competitiveness standpoint, yet the resources still haven't become available. So, as we work with our public entities, we're developing a wide range of phasing plans which take into account the resources that are available and work the plans over a period of years for implementation purposes. As Stephanie mentioned, we will be available to present the final report to you as a board in June, come back and complete the staff training, and we're always available. We've been working with some clients for over twenty years. You still call us in classification projects and just ask a question here or there, and we're always available for support. So, with that, that's the process to date. Those are our preliminary findings, and we're more than happy to answer any questions and take comments.
Thank you very much. Board members, as you know, you've heard this preliminary report, and if you have any questions that you'd like to ask at this time, I'd like to start on my right and start with Mrs. Minnitt. If you have any questions, you can feel free to do so. If not, we'll pass right on because they will be back in June and give us the final report, I believe. And at that time, we'll have more facts and figures and numbers and all that good stuff.
I appreciate what you've done so far, and I'll probably hold questions until we get that final report because we don't know what the questions, specific questions would be at this point.
Thank you, Ms. Minnitt. Mr. Keiger, you have a question?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to thank you as well for your presentation and the hard work at this point. My only question, I guess this preliminarily, since as Ms. Minnitt said, you know, we'll have a lot more to look at. Will we be able to look at data from districts? I saw the list of everywhere. Will we be able to extrapolate out of that the districts that are most, the adjacent districts? I'm trying, searching for the word, the adjacent districts, to be able to look? Obviously, we want to look at the big picture. We don't want to skew our decision-making, but obviously, looking at the adjacent districts is going to mean quite a bit to us. Is that something we're going to be able to pull out?
Yes, sir. As part of the report, the final report, in our appendices, we'll have the salary survey data, and we'll break it down jurisdiction or district by district or jurisdiction by jurisdiction on those responding positions that we have information for, yes.
Okay. Good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Keiger. Ms. Blackweldon?
I do have a couple of questions, and I think you were probably looking for the word comparable.
Well, in my mind, I was thinking about the systems.
Yeah, that was what I was, especially when it came to supplements, since there's not a breakdown in there. There's a huge difference between Durham and Guilford and Charlotte Mack, then there is us or Mooresville, Iredale Estates, all that group. So, will we be able to, will you have that specific information that shows supplements per those districts?
Yes, we will.
I'm kind of curious, on your current findings and recommendations, I actually thought there's probably a real good reason, but this does not, the eighteen, twenty-eight, and five, only comes up for fifty-one. It's not the sixty-two that was surveyed. So, what is the difference there and why is that information up there?
Eleven of the sixty-two positions, their data, we did not use based on our analysis. Either the data was unreliable, so there were sixty-two positions. We didn't use data for eleven, which left the fifty-one.
Are you saying, on our end, it was not reliable?
No, on the survey data that we received. Sometimes what we get, you know, localities and school districts try to match up to the best of their ability, position to position. But sometimes, you see a position which is paid in another jurisdiction so high or so low, it just doesn't make sense. There's something wrong with that data. So, that usually is set aside. In another case, sometimes we just don't get enough responses. It may be a single incumbent position in another locality or another school district, and that data doesn't give us enough of a market picture to really be able to provide the data that we need. So, we set that aside as well.
Okay. And my last question, in your SAFE, the breakdown for your SAFE, it doesn't list any type of length of service or time of service or any of that part of evaluation piece, but I guess that's in your compression part. But how much does that actually play a factor in that?
The compression part is actually separate from the job evaluation. We'll look at years of service and position for all of your various jobs here and the folks in the jobs, and we'll get a sense of where they fall in relationship to one another within the range. It's a little bit different than SAFE. The SAFE system allows us to establish that hierarchy of positions. And then compression, once you have those positions assigned to the salary range, you look at the folks in those positions in those same jobs, and you say, well, we have a mechanic at the bus shop who has fifteen years of experience making X number of dollars, and we have another bus mechanic making X minus one, and they're about ten dollars apart. That's salary compression because of years of service. We'll be looking at that, and we'll be determining where the issues lie and then what the impacts of resolving those issues will be.
Okay. And just, actually, this is just a statement, not a question. But I know you made the statement that there are not a lot of entities out there doing any type of surveys right now from two thousand and eight because of the economy, but you're seeing that pick up.
Yes.
And I think that is because of the competitiveness. People have been out of jobs, or one spouse out of a household has been out of jobs for so long that they are looking for the competitiveness. So, I think this has really come at a good time for us. Thank you for the information, and we look forward to you seeing you in June.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Blackweldon. Ms. Furtinbaum?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My question is actually kind of a follow-on to Ms. Blackweldon. I'm thinking from the standpoint of the supplements that really struck me that were so far off in supplements. We knew we were off on teachers, but I didn't think we were off that much on administrators. Do you take into account, if you will, most of the weighting factors? So, if we have more younger or lower experienced assistant principals and principals as opposed to other districts, especially smaller districts may have kept staff for many years, does that, where does that come into play as far as the weighting? Because if you look at, and for example, if some of our staff would look at this before the final report and would say, oh, gosh, we're X percent below, well, that may depend on your years of service, how much you're below. Would that be correct?
Sure. Thank you. Yes, again, this is data, this is the salary data from the big picture. This is not looking at your individual employees at this point. We're working on that side. We're working with Kathy to do that. But you're exactly right. Once we have determined your supplement scale, because it is a scale, it is a separate pay scale, we're going to determine based on some criteria, years of service, years in Cabarrus, whatever it might be, years in current position, what does their supplement pay look like and how does that come out? So, that is the next step, and you've hit the nail on the head. This isn't necessarily, employees are going to get a thirty percent increase in their supplement. This is, on average, your salary supplements are off of the market thirty-six percent. Good.
Okay.
Did you want to follow up?
Do any of the other districts that you looked at, do they have variations other than years of service on their supplement scales, perhaps degrees, specialties like math and science, any other kind of factors?
From the data that we have, it was based on the years in the teaching area, and it was also based on that degree level. Is it a master's? Is it a bachelor's, whatever it is? So, those were the two components of that supplement that we've seen so far.
Okay. So, nothing based on specialties of that vein or whatever? Okay. And then my other question, this might be more for Kelly, our financial officer. The state pays X amount of dollars for positions. Is all of the money in this gap to market, that's all local funding then? Okay. So, it's almost like the state needs this survey too, you know, quite honestly, to be competitive.
Unfortunately, that's the case we find in most states that we work in, that public education is a little bit, well, I understate things, but a little bit underfunded by the state. And that's true in Virginia. It's true in North Carolina, from what we gather, and other states that we work in as well. So, there should be some assistance from the state, but unfortunately, there's not.
Okay. So, we're left to multiple needs, Mr. Chair, for all this local funding, which unfortunately is on the taxpayers then, so it challenges us. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Furtinbaum, for your comments. Mr. Furt?
Yeah. I'd like to follow up a little bit on what Cindy said because, you know, I'm going to go ahead and fess up to you guys. I think I was the lone board member that voted against the salary study. And honestly, and part of the reasons I did was really some of the information you've given us tonight. I mean, we already knew most of this. I mean, it's good to have it, the data, in front of us, but I don't think any of us are surprised. And just like her last question, you know, what are we going to do? And when I listen, if I'm at home and I'm a teacher, assistant principal, or employee, you know, I'm like, good gracious, I got morale issues. And that's what I was afraid of. But, you know, they let you finish the study, get the true numbers in June, and then y'all might persuade me differently.
Thank you, board members. Everybody clear? Ms. Davis, Mr. Anzavio, thank you so very much for being here. And Ms. Auger, and we look forward to seeing you again in June, and hopefully, we'll get this wrapped up and know pretty much exactly where we are.
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all very much.
Okay, board members, we'd like to ask Mr. Lynn Wickie to come to the podium, seven point two, where he's going to talk with us about a right-of-way for the city of Concord. Mr. Wickie?
Just take me a minute, Mr. Chairman, to clear this up.
You just need to close the one tab, don't you? Which window? This one. Thank you. Thank you. Have a...
The project that we're talking about this evening is the request by the city of Concord for an easement at Beverly Hills Elementary School. The documents that I've included are the aerial, which is what I would like you to look at first. Take a moment to come up on screen, because I think it best describes what we're looking at. There we go. And I have, this is Sue Hyde, she's the chief engineer for the city here tonight, if there are further questions. But as you can see from the drawing, from the aerial shot and the imposed drawing, there's a section of sanitary sewer that has failed, and because of its location and the number of homes that it serves, the city approached our office and the board with the idea of interconnecting or making a cross connection, if you will, between a current sewer line and, in effect, circumventing the portion that's failed. And that would allow the city to maintain service to the homes. And really, in looking at the location, which, if I can get the mouse to cooperate, literally, this line here, the interconnection of the two sewers would thus avoid this section of the sewer line and reconnect these two lines, thereby making service continuous and not affecting the homes involved. So, their request is to have an easement that would allow them to install this line. The importance is, is that the line is failed and/or in the process of failing, and they need to get this work underway. I've asked our staff to look at this, I've asked the attorneys to look at it. We don't see any problems for the school district or for the operation of the school. That is the rec area for the school that the new line would be run through, so it's not affecting construction or a building or anything of that nature. It's simply a field that the work would be done in. And so, our superintendent's recommendation is to move forward with the easement to prove it, so the city can conduct the work and keep the sewage flowing.
Thank you, Mr. Wickie. I'd like to find out now, what are you wanting us to do this evening? Are you wanting us to take action on this this evening?
Yes, sir. Yes, we are.
All right. Board, before we move forward, does anyone have any questions, concerns? I'd like to start with Mr. Furr's side, and we can move forward.
No, I have no questions, but who am I to keep sewage from flowing?
He never fails to be a little bit funny. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Furr, for your comments. Ms. Furtenbaum.
Mr. Wickie, the document says a thirty-foot right-of-way width. Is that a width?
Yes, ma'am, it is. Correct.
What is on that thirty feet, with any fencing or anything?
There will be a temporary fencing for construction purposes.
But we don't have any fencing regarding playground or anything else?
Oh, I'm sorry. No, to my knowledge, no. And Sue, would you like to step up and assist me? This is Ms. Sue Hyde.
Board members, thank you for considering this item tonight. We don't propose to put up anything. If there's anything there, we're proposing to put it back exactly like it is. It's actually city crews that would be doing the work. And so, our, we would want to restore it exactly the way it is now. I don't know if that answers your question.
Okay. No, that's why, I just want to know, if there was a fence or something, could it be replaced, or would it prohibit something that is currently there from being replaced?
Yeah. If there were, and I don't believe the fences are located there, I think they're back further. If there were any existing structures, they would be removed and then replaced at the end of the work. But the thirty-foot is a common easement width, and it's simply be able to allow future, should future work be necessary on the line, that would allow the city the ability to get trucks and equipment on that easement to do the work.
Thank you, Ms. Furtenbaum. Ms. Blackwelder, you have any questions, concerns? Okay, Mr. Cogger.
Just as a follow-up to that, what is, what is the easement currently, I mean, what do we have there now? Because we'll have to, anytime they have to make repair, we're going to have to go back and fix whatevers.
It's really an area of, on the recreational field of the school, but it's very close to the road. I mean, it's literally right off the road. So, we don't have children typically playing in that area.
Okay. Well, say that again, it's literally off the road?
In other words, it starts at, of course, in the middle of the street, but it runs, you know, directly towards the rec area, but it stops before that and turns, I believe that's south, away from the, right, away from the rec fields. Let me, in other words, the green line is existing sewer lines. If I can get this mouse to behave. So, we're really tying into this line that's running through here currently. Can you see that mouse as I move it across the?
Yeah, we have an existing sewer line that runs on the school property, and we have a duplicate at this intersection. It's amazing what all is there. And we're trying, we have a duplicate sewer line, and right now, the line that's failing is tied to one that we're hoping to abandon. That's why we're wanting to go ahead and tie to the line there at the school, so that will assist us in abandoning a section that's running under Palisade now.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Cogger. Ms. Minnet. Absolutely. That's one of our older communities in Cabarrus County, in the city of Concord, and we always worked very good with the city. They've worked with us, and so I see only an improvement there for everyone concerned. I'd like to ask our attorney for, just to make sure I got clarity. As you know, this is not on our action agenda. We don't have an action agenda for this. So, I'm supposing we'll need to go ahead and do the routine, ask for a motion, the whole works, and do it like that. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think that's right. And if you want to, out of bonus question, you may want to move it to amend the agenda to add this as an action item and then vote on it, would be my suggestion. In other words, it is not on the action item, but the board can add items at their meetings to the action agenda. So, I would suggest a motion to move it to the action item agenda, and then you can vote and approve.
Well, that's what we'll do, just to make sure we're on the safe side. So, I'll take a motion that the agenda be amended, that we'll put the item seven point two, the right-of-way for the city of Concord at Beverly Hills, to be added to the agenda. Do I have a motion?
Summoned.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries. Now, are there any other comments before we vote? Do I have a motion that we approve the right-of-way for the city of Concord at Beverly Hills Elementary School? Have a motion? Do I have a second? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Mr. Wickie, it's approved.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for being here. Okay, board members, we're going to move on to seven point three, to the section that's designed or dedicated to the board chair for comments. And I do have just a couple of comments. We've got just a couple more weeks, as you all know, before graduation. I want to congratulate all the seniors that's working so hard. And this is going to be a special graduation for me, because when I was first elected to the school board back in the year two thousand, well, all you kids that's going to be graduating in two thousand twelve were first graders then. So, I've been able to stick with you about the whole time now, and so it's going to be a pleasure to see you walk the stage in June. And that's coming up just in a short few weeks, and it'll be here before you know it. Also, wanted to comment, just for a couple of minutes, about the meeting that we had this past Thursday with the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners. If you recall, we talked about this in April, or might have even been in March, about getting a joint meeting set up with the Cabarrus County Commissioners and the Board of Education. And we did have that meeting, and it was last Thursday. I think that we made some accomplishments there. We let it be known, the needs of the school system, our, you know, our newspaper, we thank them for all that they do. I don't really consider it a wish list, but that's how it was listed. These are needs, some of these needs are critical needs, and they need to be looked at in that way. But I believe Ms. Blackwelder, she's one of our, on our construction committee for the Board of Education, and she has some comments that she'd like to add also.
And I know that, Mr. Wickie, if you don't mind coming back to the podium, we'll probably have to answer a few of these questions. You know, I was actually just a little bit disappointed in our combined meeting Thursday afternoon, because it appears that some of those items that we discussed have been talked about for the last three to four months. And I'm not sure why we're still having some of those discussions, but not furthering the discussion along about items we've not talked about. One of my questions is, the Northwest Cabarrus High School project, that seems to be the topic of discussion for the past at least five to six months on the Board of Commissioners' agenda. I'm not really understanding, and I need you to help me understand, why we would move that project from the QSCB, which has a very finite interest rate, half a percent, zero point zero five, why that would even be thought about, moving that off the QSCB projects and onto something later on that could be financed at a much higher rate. And Kelly, if you could, I don't know if I'm putting you on the spot, if you'd be able to answer just what our COPS projects normally would come in at a finance interest rate. I'm just really curious why that even would even come up, and if it's coming up, why is it coming up now?
Over the years, the interest rate has varied from two to five and a half percent, but generally, they're staying right around four percent for COPS.
So, actually, it would not benefit us to pull that off the QSCB. And I want to make sure that I heard some of the statements that were made, that they actually preferred us to remove that and maybe look at doing that at a later date when we would remodel Northwest High School, or renovate it, or tear it down and rebuild it, whatever the situation is, and to actually add the gymnasium to that portion of it then. But we're going to pull fifty, sixty, hundred thousand dollar jobs to accommodate that, when it appears to me that those projects would actually be better served for a different type of financing package or option. Do you, as our director of construction, believe it that way to be as well, or is that your opinion, or did you think differently?
No, ma'am, it is my opinion, I agree with you, that in reality, with a two and a half million dollar project with a smaller amount of interest rate, and especially right now, right now, we're still looking at reasonable rates of reasonable cost, rather, in the construction industry. However, we see on every front that we talk to contractors, we talk to manufacturers, we talk to people beyond our area of expertise, beyond K through twelve, everyone is seeing costs beginning to rise. We're hopeful that we can get this project bid by the fall of this year and take advantage of current low prices in the construction industry. I think if we wait any longer than that, we're going to be subject to significant cost increases on this size of project. The lower, the smaller projects, some of the mechanical projects, they tend to be a bit more fixed rate, because there's a great demand for mechanical equipment as we go through time, both in our area as well as any other area in the United States. And so, those costs tend to be more competitive over time than the cost of concrete or steel or copper. And so, I strongly recommend both to this board and to the county commissioners that we continue on with that project at this time and take advantage of these lower costs.
You know, my real concern, as I sit there and listen, we got some questions that I would have thought they would have already had their information. You know, we had, do we have unsafe schools? We all know that we go through annual inspections between city and county inspectors, so if there's any unsafe school out there anywhere, we'd be the first to know, and so would they, since they actually, the majority of them work for them. The other issue I had was, what, where would we benefit, or why would we have not benefited from pulling in a QSCB project number two? Well, I never got a good answer from why they chose not to go that route, or another financing round of QSCB projects.
I think that in the case of the QSCB round two, we did submit the request to NCD, DPI, in the hope of being one of the selected counties. As it turned out, before the request could even get to the county for their official vote, the DPI informed us that all of the counties, I think there were, there were a number, I want to say around a dozen or so counties that submitted, only four were selected, and those four were only, were counties that had not submitted in round one. And that was what the state decided. So, literally, it became a moot point in that regard.
And I'm just going to make one more final statement, and that's, you know, I think people really need to understand, there's two licensed general contractors that sit on this board with the subcommittee for the construction. We're very diligent when we work with you. I would think recommendations coming from that type of background, you would take that seriously when we tell you there's code changes coming, and it's going to hit the taxpayers a whole lot more expensive than a financing package and dilly-dallying back and forth with monies. That was very concerning to me Thursday, that the majority of people talking in that room really had not done their homework and does not understand that what you just said is going to take place within the next year between code changes, materials, all the things that are going to escalate because construction is coming back. And for us not to do this at this point in time, somebody's not been paying a whole lot of attention. So, I appreciate that. What I heard the most out of that was, we didn't have a lot of good communication back and forth. But I appreciate you taking the time to do that for me.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wickie.
You're welcome, sir.
Okay. And just one further comment. You know, one of the things that really held us back, and Ms. Blackwelder, as you well know, was the time constraints. It was unfortunate that we didn't get to spend as much time as I had hoped we would, but both boards had other commitments. So, but it was a beginning, though. It's a start. And we had to start somewhere, and I felt like that it was a good start. So, when we get together again, hopefully, within the next two or three months, we'll be able to move forward, and maybe with even some committees, to help move this process further, because the situation that we're in with the critical needs did not happen overnight. The problem's not going to be solved overnight. It's going to take time. It'll take twelve, fourteen months, eighteen months minimum to come up with a plan, as we refer to as a master plan. It would be a plan that would have the Board of Commissioners and the Board of Education on the same page with a goal to work forward, to have a plan to move forward, to reduce this list of needs that's on the critical needs list and the five-year plan. Okay.
Mr. Chair, I hate to interrupt you, but I just want clarification on that. I was really not referencing that part of the meeting. I was referencing the QSCB project information that we had. You're right, they had little time to look at the information regarding the other part of the meeting, but I was really referencing the fifth or sixth month in a row that we've been talking about QSCB, that we got off on, that really that information shouldn't have been that skewed.
I agree with you on that. But I had to give credit where credit was due, because it was a short meeting, folks. I mean, it really was. We didn't intend for it to be that way, but that's just the way it was. And we dealt with it the best way that we knew how. So, anyhow, let's move on to seven point four, and Dr. Shepherd's got a turn here at his comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a few comments tonight. First of all, I want to let everyone know what an important week this is for our school system in terms of our end-of-grade testing. Parents, as a reminder, make sure your students are well-rested each day for our important assessments, and we have many volunteers that are serving as proctors. And so, I'm very thankful for that. It takes our community and our community's support in order to make that happen. We couldn't do it without you. Second thing I'd like to tell you tonight is that I'm excited to announce that the Central Cabarrus High School and Concord Middle School have been selected as the University of North Carolina at Charlotte Professional Development Schools. CCS personnel in conjunction with UNC Charlotte faculty collaborated to submit a grant to become a part of the UNC Professional Development School Network. And Concord Middle will receive a grant in the amount of one thousand five hundred dollars, and Central Cabarrus will receive a grant in the amount of three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. As a part of the network, Central Cabarrus and Concord Middle will join thirteen other schools, whose staff will have the opportunity to participate in a variety of worthy educational initiatives for a number of professional development topics, such as engaging in applied inquiry designed to improve practice, supporting the retention of new and veteran teachers, and preparing new teachers to meet state standards for content, skills, and student achievement goals. So, we want to thank UNC Charlotte for selecting two of our schools, and know that this will be a unique opportunity for staff members to participate in professional development. And lastly, if I could add my word of thanks to the Educational Foundation tonight for the wonderful reception they provided and working with our human resource staff. Ms. Minnet and others have done an excellent job through our foundation to provide great support for our school system for many, many years, and I thank you very much. And that's my report.
Thank you, Dr. Shepherd. Yes, Ms. Minnet.
I forgot to mention earlier that we have another board member on this board, and that's Holly Blackwelder.
Absolutely. Okay, board members, it's time for us to move on now to eight point one, where we have the guest speaker section, and we have one person that has signed up to speak tonight, and that's Ms. Wilma Means. I'd like to ask you to come to the podium, if you will. You have three minutes to address the board, and whenever you get here and you get started, the timer will get going for you, okay?
On that one, thank you. Cabarrus County has over four hundred and seventy-five homeless children that we're aware of, because they are either in school or have siblings in school. There's another group of homeless children who live with relatives in hotels, shelters, and in cars, who live in substandard housing without a lease, or the people they stay with are unwilling to sign documents. This is a real problem for a lot of families. I've worked with about thirty families during this school year, and one called me today with four children who have been displaced. Most were helped by the central office, and some just gave up. I did not realize this was an issue until a homeless student became a part of my household. She was able to stay in our house and go to school because of... She was able to stay in our house and go to school because of McKinney-Vento Act of 1987, and because of the National Center for Homeless Students. This act protects all students who do not have a fixed, regular, and adequate residence, or domicile, or even kids who are abandoned. I've talked with a number of agencies about homeless and undocumented clients, and how they receive services in my efforts to help these families enroll their children in school. Now, I understand that you are trying to prevent athletes from choosing schools and from parents, but this policy also hinders elementary and middle school children from enrolling. Now, I've been going through your checklist and reading up on McKinney-Vento, and what I had hoped was that after tonight, I don't know if you, Cabarrus County has a liaison person, and I've looked at what other states are doing to help make parents aware of McKinney-Vento, because many of the students that I have helped over the year come under that guideline of double, in double housing, runaway hotels and motel shelters, transitional housing, cars, and campgrounds, et cetera. And maybe to undertake a massive information campaign on the rights of individuals experiencing homelessness, to train school personnel about the requirements of the act and how to comply with it, to designate school liaisons for identifying, assisting, and enrolling homeless children, to provide bus passes so that homeless children could attend their schools of origin, and to inform homeless parents about dispute resolution process. I also was looking at the enrollment checklist. Based on this, I know a lot of people, and I wouldn't even be able to have anybody, but McKinney-Vento requires the school to immediately enroll children who meet the criteria, even if the parent cannot produce records that are normally required. And the liaison is supposed to help parents get records. Now, the enrollment form that you have has a little blurb on the back about certification of domicile, but it doesn't have anything about McKinney-Vento. The other classroom domicile, it has that, and a definition, and about misdemeanors, and what felonies, and all that kind of stuff. But what I would like for Cabarrus County to think about is the homeless education liaison coordinator. I don't know if we have one, but maybe they can get one to assist families and get the information out, so that all students are entitled, who are entitled to attend school, and remove barriers in their enrollment, so that they can get an education in Cabarrus County. Now, I have all these documents, and I'm sure you do too, but I said, the McKinney-Vento has been since 1987, and North Carolina gets a good bit of money from that law, and I don't know how much we get in Cabarrus County, but I hope we get enough that some of these children, who I've worked with, and some of these children who just gave up and did not even attend school this year, because their parents could not produce the documents that were necessary, and the people they were living with, who are on fixed income, would not sign a domicile.
Thank you, Ms. Means, for being here tonight, and we'll take what you've had to say under advisement, and Dr. Shepherd, I'm sure, has made some notes to that effect, and be looking into it. Thank you for coming. Okay, board members, before we move forward, our technical staff needs to change their disc, and so let's take about a 10, 15-second break while they do that.